Loving and merciful God, we thank you for allowing us to gather here tonight. We pray for guidance in the matters at hand and ask that you send the Holy Spirit upon all leaders of our school district. Let us lead with integrity and let us always put the needs of others ahead of our own. As we navigate through this school year, we further ask that you keep our students safe and bless our remarkable employees for their unwavering dedication to LaFouche. Most of all, never let us forget to put you at the center of everything we do. We ask all of this in the name of your son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
President of the United States of America, and as we the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Wright?
Here.
Dr. Gia?
Here.
Ms. Bader?
Here.
Ms. Portita?
Here.
Mr. DuPlantes?
Here.
Ms. Bourgeois?
Here.
Ms. Wells? And Ms. Charpentier?
Here.
Hi, Ms. E. Receiver report from Mr. Steve Russell, LaFouche Parish District Attorney. Good evening. Thank you.
I'm going to come in front of you again. I look forward to this every year. David's going to start just a slideshow as I speak, and I'll be brief, of just some pictures from last year and what we've done for you guys. You know, we really appreciate the partnership that we have with all of you. It allows us to do what I think our mission is, which is to be proactive. And I know all of you, and I think you agree that sometimes we have to get out of our lane a little bit. Not just do our job, but be proactive if we ever want to see a change, and really change our community and our children. So last year, we were able to do one final year of the pantry. If you all remember, after Ida, we were inundated with donations and supplies. And so we felt as though we could put that in our schools and provide some extra food for our children. That's one of those donations, but please know that if we ever have anything ever again, and I know we won't, we're still here to partner with you guys, and we're planning on putting that pantry back into place if we ever would have another disaster. And we're still at our respect you. And respect you is what I think all of our programs, it's sort of the umbrella. And it's all about teaching children and adults sometimes about respect and about respecting yourself, respecting others, and knowing around you. And so all of our school programs that we've put together really go under this idea of respect. We, you know, we had our project lead, which we've still done. We've had our personal and private programs that we've got in our schools and done as well. One school requested something on vaping, and I have to commend David Malonsone, who's here. He put together a vaping program, which is outstanding, and we were able to get it to our schools and present that. We have our domino program, which of course is always near and dear to my heart, which is drinking while driving and texting while driving. And we partner with Matt for that, and we go into our senior classes of our four high schools, and that's very important to us as well. We have our wobble goggles that we go into our classes with. We partner with our advocacy center and talk about sexting and good touch, bad touch, and being safe on our computers and our internet. And that's very important to us as well, to partner with them and get to our children. And what I'm here to tell you today is all of our programs are going to be there. We're going to send out, we send a letter to you, I know, Mr. Martin, we're going to send a letter to our principals and basically say, we're here waiting, and we're here for what you need. You know, schools have reached out to us in the past and said, this is our problem. Do you have a program to fit that? And we say, we'll make one. And then usually David gets to work, and he starts to put together whatever it is we need, and we get the staff members who best fit that school and best fit that theme, and we'll go in and teach. And so we enjoy that as much as probably they enjoy it. Our truancy program, of course, and we appreciate Mr. Philson allowing us to partner in regards to truancy. We'll be there. Again, if you need something, you know, you certainly can call me directly. But again, we're back for our truancy program as well. We're looking at a few things in regards to when we do file against parents, there's some things that I think we can do that we haven't done in the past, and so we are exploring that. So again, we're here, we'll be there. It's a phone call away. Our programs will be there. The principals, we're receiving the letters, which basically explains the programs that we have in existence. But again, as a catch-all, you do something, and we'll do it. Any questions?
I just want to thank you, Susan. I want to thank you for the partnership all of these years, because you are making a difference in the lives of children. That's what we're all here for.
And so y'all, and so I think we appreciate the fact that we can partner with you guys, because I think we all have the same mission. And so really, I'll come here to thank you and let you know that we're just a phone call away if you need us. Thank you.
Item F, introduce new district administrator.
Yes, we had the privilege of moving Mr. John Schell into the maintenance department. And I'm very happy to announce that a longtime LaFouche Parish employee, a gentleman who's committed a large section of his life to LaFouche Parish schools, has been promoted to the new role, and looking forward to working with Mr. CJ Dempster. Mr. Dempster? I know you're not going to get off that easy. You've got to at least stand up and say a couple words.
I want to thank everyone. I appreciate the opportunity, and I'm looking forward to meeting them real soon. I've had a good 20 years of fun, and I'm going to enjoy it, and looking forward to...
About stock?
...retelling it. And so thank you all.
Thank you.
And he hit the ground running. We had a bunch of HVAC issues that he was able to get on top of, and so we appreciate all the work that I know he did with his whole maintenance department as well. It's been a busy start to the school. Thanks, CJ.
Item number two, approval of board consent agenda. A, approval of board consent agenda items. B, special school board meeting, public hearing and adoption of the 2024 operating budget. C, minutes of the regular board meeting held August 7, 2023. And D, to proclaim September 17th to the 23rd, 2023, as Constitution week in LaFouche Parish schools. In conjunction with the binding of which chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution, National Principals Month, October 1 through 31st, 2023, National Custodial Workers' Recognition Day, October 2nd, 2023, LaFouche Parish Bus Safety, School Bus Operator and School Bus Monitor Appreciation Week, October 16th to 20th, 2023. Have a motion by Ms. Portita, second by Ms. Charpentier. Any public discussion? Any board comments? If not, we'll vote. Motion passes. Item three, approval of policy and academics committee recommendations as per meeting held August 16, 2023. Dr. Gia?
To approve revisions to policy, AC, school attendance boundaries, B, C, AD, teleconference remote participation in school board meetings, B, C, B, I, public participation in school board meetings, E, B, B, D, school and student safety, J, B, attendance, J, B, D, student absences and excuses, J, G, C, D, administration of medications, and new policies, E, D, C, B, carpool and bus line safety, I, D, C, J, continuous learning. So move.
Motion by Dr. Gia, seconded by Ms. Bourgeois. Any public comment? Any board discussion? If none, we'll vote. Motion passes. Item four, approval of business committee recommendations as per meeting held August 16, 2023. Ms. Portita?
A, to approve the renewal quote as presented by Colm Groth of Norris Insurance Consulting of the Workers' Compensation Access Insurance Code. So move.
Motion by Ms. Portita, seconded by Dr. Gia. Any public comment? Any board discussion? If none, we'll vote. Motion passes.
B, to authorize President Tina Babbin and Superintendent Derek Morton to sign the 2022-2023 Louisiana Compliance Questionnaire by adopting the Louisiana Compliance Questionnaire Resolution and to submit a copy of the questionnaire to eyes of Amber, the board's independent auditor. So move.
Motion by Ms. Portita, seconded by Mr. Wright. Any public comment? Any board discussion? We'll vote. Motion passes.
C, to approve awarding the bid for refrigerant to the lowest most responsible bidders per line item. So move.
Motion by Ms. Portita, seconded by Mr. DuPlantes. Any public comment? Any board discussion? Okay, let's vote. Motion passes.
D, to approve bids for chrome parts to the lowest most responsive bidder per line item. So move.
Motion by Ms. Portita, seconded by Mr. Wright. Any public comment? Any board discussion? Let's vote. Motion passes.
E, to approve advertising proposals for drug testing services on ASV based. So move.
Motion by Ms. Portita, seconded by Ms. Charpentier. Any public comment? Any board discussion? Let's vote. Motion passes.
Item F, to approve advertising for bids for the purchase of fleet vehicles on an ASV based. So move.
Motion by Ms. Portita, seconded by Ms. Bourgeois. Any public comment? Any board discussion? Okay, let's vote. Motion passes. Item five, approval of land and facilities management committee recommendations as per meeting held August 16, 2023. Ms. DuPlantes?
All right, to the general public, I do apologize. We are going through the alphabet not only once, but we're starting the second time around. A lot to go over today. If you missed a committee meeting, a lot was discussed in committee meetings. All right? So, item A, to approve a request from Tepito Lions Club to waive the fee for the use of a football turf field at Tepito High School. So move.
Motion by Mr. DuPlantes, seconded by Mr. Wright. Any public comment? Okay, David? Would you like to join us?
Yeah, thank you. We just asked the board to approve this motion to waive fees for the facility. We had a great event. It was a little hot, a lot hot that day. But all of our kids were able to play football and had a great time. And I think this year's proceeds to be split amongst the school will be about $8,000. So if we can approve this, we can put those checks into principals and coaches' hands and let them spend it as they wish.
Thank you very much. Any further public comment? Any board discussion? If not, let's vote. Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Item B, to approve a request from Raceland B basketball to waive the fees for the use of the gymnasium at Raceland Middle School. So move.
Motion by Ms. DuPlantes, seconded by Ms. Bourgeois. Any public comment? Would you guys like to approach?
Hi, y'all, done? Well, we appreciate y'all for approving, waiving the fees. We're just trying to get our program back going, because we ain't had nowhere to play in the last two years. So we're just trying to get the kids back in the gym and get things going. We appreciate y'all.
State your name, board.
Evans Lewis.
Okay, Ms. Lewis, thank you very much. Any further public comment? Or any public comment? Any board discussion? Just name?
I just want to say that I appreciate each gentleman doing that for the Raceland community. I know the recreational centers being used by FEMA, so that's why we're headed to the middle school. And I appreciate you guys still carrying this on.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we can vote. Motion passes.
Item C, to approve bids for hurricane item repairs to 10 various sites. So move.
Motion by Ms. DuPlantes, seconded by Dr. Gia. Any public comment? Any board discussion? If not, we'll vote. Motion passes.
Item D, to approve the most responsible quote
From?
From, not long, from Mobile Modular Management Corporation for Hurricane Ida Project for new modular building at Golden Meadow Upper Elementary School for a total amount of $100,0082.84, which includes all costs to set up the modular building, provide a two-year lease, and all costs to remove the building at the end of the lease term. So move.
Okay, motion by Ms. DuPlantes, seconded by Ms. Charpentier. Any public comment? Any board discussion? Okay, let's vote. Motion passes.
Item E, to approve a changed order request for Hurricane Ida repairs in the sum of $2,891.90 to add pipe supports for electrical conduits on the roof of Building 1 and add 90 days to the contract at Golden Meadow Upper Elementary School. So move.
Motion by Ms. DuPlantes, seconded by Ms. Portita. Any public comment? Any board discussion? Okay, let's vote. Motion passes.
Item F, to approve a changed order request for Hurricane Ida repairs in the sum of $3,791 to add a flagpole at South LaFouche High School. So move.
Motion by Ms. DuPlantes, seconded by Dr. Gia. Any public comment? Any board discussion? Okay, we'll vote. Motion passes.
Item G, to approve a changed order request for Hurricane Ida repairs in the sum of $18,026.47 to add additional LVT flooring and cool base at LaRose Cut Off Middle School. So move.
Motion by Ms. DuPlantes, seconded by Dr. Gia. Any public comment? Any board discussion? Okay, we'll vote. Motion passes.
Item H, to approve a changed order request for Hurricane Ida repairs in the sum of $4,400 for VAT basement of the van room and the second floor corridor at LaRose Cut Off Middle School. So move.
Motion by Ms. DuPlantes, seconded by Ms. Bourgeois. Any public comment? Any board discussion? Okay, let's vote. Motion passes.
Item I, to approve a changed order request for Hurricane Ida repairs in the sum of $18,810 for the repairs to the aluminum canopies at LaRose Cut Off Middle School. So move.
Motion by Ms. DuPlantes, seconded by Mr. Wright. Any public comment? Any board discussion? Let's vote. Motion passes.
Item J, to approve a changed order request for Hurricane Ida repairs in the sum of $6,131.40 to substitute electrical panel due to delays in delivery at LaRose Cut Off Middle School. So move.
Motion by Ms. DuPlantes, seconded by Ms. Portita. Any public comment? Any board discussion? Okay, let's vote. Motion passes.
Item K, to approve a changed order request for Hurricane Ida repairs in the sum of $78,363.2 to repair buildings number four and number six at North LaRose Elementary School. So move.
Motion by Ms. DuPlantes, seconded by Ms. Bourgeois. Any public comment? Any board discussion? Let's vote. Motion passes.
Item L, to approve a changed order request for Hurricane Ida repairs in the sum of $71,146.43 to repair additional roof damage at North LaRose Elementary School. So move.
Motion by Ms. DuPlantes, seconded by Ms. Charpentier. Any public comment? Board discussion? Okay, let's vote. Motion passes.
Item M, to approve a changed order request for Hurricane Ida repairs to issue a credit in the sum of $4,339.39 due to accounting error on change order number one at North LaRose Elementary School. So move.
Motion by Mr. DuPlantes, seconded by Mrs. Portita. Any public comment? Any board discussion?
Just let y'all know, we love credit change orders.
This is the best word.
Keep them coming.
If no other comment, we'll vote. Motion passes.
Item N, to approve a changed order request for Hurricane Ida repairs in the sum of $33,038 to replace half channels that were removed when the temporary roof was installed and add 30 days to the contract at Lockport Upper Elementary School. So move.
Motion by Ms. DuPlantes, seconded by Mr. Wright. Any public comment? Any board discussion? All right, let's vote. Motion passes.
Item O, to approve a changed order request for Hurricane Ida repairs in the sum of $9,300 to purchase additional LVT flooring and adhesive at Lockport Elementary School. So move.
Motion by Ms. DuPlantes, seconded by Dr. Gia. Any public comment? Any board discussion? Okay, let's vote. Motion passes.
Item P, to approve a changed order request for Hurricane Ida repairs in the sum of $1,975.75 to replace the light fixtures in the teacher's lounge, Raceland Upper Elementary School. So move.
Motion by Mr. DuPlantes, seconded by Ms. Bourgeois. Any public comment? Any board discussion? Okay, let's vote. Motion passes.
Item Q, to approve a changed order request for Hurricane Ida repairs in the sum of $10,206.12 to purchase additional LVT flooring at Raceland Upper Elementary School. So move.
Motion by Ms. DuPlantes, seconded by Ms. Portita. Any public comment? Any board discussion? Okay, let's vote. Motion passes.
Item R, to approve a changed order request for Hurricane Ida repairs in the sum of $95,247 to replace roof panels that had holes from the temporary roof and add 30 additional days to the contract at Raceland Upper Elementary School. So move.
Motion by Ms. DuPlantes, seconded by Dr. Gia. Any public comment? Any board discussion? Okay, let's vote. Motion passes.
Item S, to approve verges Rome architect to begin schematic design on repairs and upgrades at Raceland Upper Elementary School with a construction budget of $7 million. So move.
Motion by Ms. DuPlantes, seconded by Mr. Wright. Any public comment? Any board discussion? If not, let's vote. Motion passes.
Item T, to approve a changed order request for Hurricane Ida repairs in the sum of $1,480.63 to install shoe molding and multiple rooms at Cut Off Elementary School. So move.
Motion by Ms. DuPlantes, seconded by Ms. Charpentier. Any public comment? Any board discussion? Let's vote. Motion passes.
Item U, to approve a changed order request for Hurricane Ida repairs in the sum of $6,920 to abate rooms 227 and 229 at Galliano Elementary School. So move.
Motion by Ms. DuPlantes, seconded by Ms. Portita. Any public comment? Any board discussion? Okay, let's vote. Okay, let's vote. Motion passes.
Item V, to approve a change order request for Hurricane Ida repairs in the sum of twenty-one thousand five hundred fifty-one dollars seventy cents for material cost of L V T flooring in building one at St. Charles Elementary School, SoMo.
Motion by Mr. Du Planis, seconded by Ms. Fertitta. Any public comment? Any board discussion?
I'd just like to ask Mr. Sharpe, what's L V T flooring?
Luxury vinyl tile.
You've said that before, but I couldn't...
Yes.
Anyone else? All right, let's go ahead and vote. Motion passes.
Item W, to approve a change order request for Hurricane Ida repairs in the sum of eight hundred three dollars sixty-six cents for material costs for storm shutters for the modular buildings per code requirement at St. Charles Elementary School, SoMo.
Motion by Mr. Du Planis, seconded by Dr. Guyot. Any public comment? Any board discussion? Okay, we'll vote. Motion passes.
Item X, to approve a change order request for Hurricane Ida repairs to issue a credit in the sum of fourteen thousand four hundred seventy-six dollars at Bayou Blue Elementary School, SoMo.
Motion by Mr. Du Planis. Everybody wants to get that one, seconded by everyone. Seconded by Ms. Fertitta. Any public comment? Any board discussion? If not, we'll go ahead and vote. Okay, motion passes.
Item Y, to approve a change order request for Hurricane Ida repairs in the sum of seventeen thousand one hundred fifty-seven dollars ninety-nine cents to add additional chain link fencing and get two gates at Bayou Blue Elementary School, SoMo.
Motion by Mr. Du Planis, seconded by Mr. Wright. Any public comment? Any board discussion? Okay, we'll vote. Motion passes.
Item Z, to approve a change order request for Hurricane Ida repairs in the sum of ten thousand nine hundred forty-three dollars eighty-eight cents to replace underground conduits and fiber optics lines, fiber optic lines, building five and twelve at Bayou Blue Elementary School, SoMo.
Motion by Mr. Du Planis, seconded by Dr. Guyot. Any public comment? Any board discussion? Okay, let's vote. Motion passes.
Item A eight, to approve a change order request for Hurricane Ida repairs in the sum of one thousand five hundred seven dollars thirty-six cents to substitute the electrical panels due to delays in delivery at Bayou Blue Elementary School, SoMo.
Motion by Mr. Du Planis, seconded by Ms. Fertitta. Any public comment? Any board discussion? Okay, let's vote. Motion passes.
Item B B, to approve a change order request for Hurricane Ida repairs in the sum of six hundred ninety-one dollars sixty-eight cents for moving of stored materials to allow exterior wall repairs in building four at Bayou Blue Elementary School, SoMo.
Motion by Mr. Du Planis, seconded by Mr. Wright. Any public comment? Board discussion? Okay, we'll vote. Motion passes.
Item C C, to approve a change order request for Hurricane Ida repairs in the sum of twenty-nine thousand two hundred fifty-five dollars fifty-three cents for L V T...
Adjustment. And I've worked with construction companies and everybody runs over. There's nobody hits their production cost because of labor and certainty. But I'm ignorant. I don't know if these are original. It says approval for change order, meaning there was an original contract issued. As a public body, these original documents were available to the public to look at what these cost and the estimates and the detail that went into them. And then they come, the contractor comes back and says, I need more money. But the original request in itemized bid that y'all award, is that available to the public?
So it can be through a public records request.
So you have to do a public records request to do that? It's not accessible to the public? Just by looking at it?
It's a public record. To get the record, you put in a request. I don't mean to sound...I don't know how else to answer your question.
Okay, well, I'm just asking, how do I see it if I wanted to see it?
But I'd like to comment on your question, if I may. We're doing a tremendous amount of FEMA recovery work. And when you do construction under FEMA guidelines, the contractor has to be very specific in the work that he sets out to do. And so when he sets forth, I'm going to replace that wall from that spot to that spot. And then he tears that wall down, and we discover damage behind it. In usual circumstances, the contractor builds in contingencies, and we approve contingency so that we don't have to come back to a change order. FEMA doesn't allow that. FEMA requires each time from the original scope of work is modified. Some of these are six hundred dollar change orders on eight million dollar projects. That would usually fall well within the contingency of the work. FEMA doesn't allow it. He has to justify to the architect of record that the board hires why he needs a change order. The architect then recommends to the board based on his knowledge of the contract what was originally approved, and then visually inspects to see that it in fact does need to be changed. And then it brings to this body for approval. And once this body approves it and the work is done, we then have the documentation to get funded back from FEMA. I didn't invent the process.
But just, you know, how much work was done, who was it issued to, to be able to understand that? And a lot of things that we, the people elect officers to do, it's amazing. Once we elect someone, the visibility of what they're doing then becomes shielded. And I was even told by a state legislator that they can't publish their records. It's an ethics violation. It's a Louis, it's an ethics violation for us to know how they voted. And so something's a little screwy about the transparency of governmental organization of if we are the bosses, we hire you, how do we see what you're doing transparently? And so that, I have that question about a lot of governmental agencies. And I just wanted to know if those original contracts are visible without a public request to know how much construction you had in each school and how much, how much was allocated. And can we see it and know it? And your answer is, no, you got to get a public records request. Does she answer?
The answer is you can see it. It's just that we have to have a public records request to have it.
Additionally, if you, if you notice every change order references a contract that was awarded, you can go into board docs and go to the night that the contract was awarded to that contractor and see the exact amount that it was awarded. And in the documents, it shows what, what was asked to be done originally, and then you can see the change order associated with it.
Yeah, I'm just trying to give some information to understand. Because if I was a C E O and you work for me, I would want to know by location, amount of money, damages to each one, and the distribution of it. And I can't see it that way. It's all kind of hard to see from what I would like to see. And so I just wanted to ask you a question and answer it.
Just one comment on that. At the committee meeting for land facilities, we have a representative that brings us a great report with pictures. And he explains to us each school.
Well, I understand.
And it's, no, it's awesome to see. Because he brings out a lot of information on what, and that's his, of course, we pay the company, we represent. And he's well, he's well needed because he knows the FEMA guidelines. And we always ask him, are we, we have a chance of getting a pay on this? Or are we going to be responsible?
Well, you have to count on the experts. You would not know what's behind the wall and what's broken. You got to really count on the expert opinion to vote on that. I was just asking about transparency and the accessibility of records without public requests. If I go to sheriff, well, I can give you that. You got to make a public request. The D A won't be here. I want to know how many fentanyl dealers were arrested and how do you adjudicate them? Well, you got to do a public records request. I mean, it's not available to receive anything. So I just wanted to...
Thank you very much. Okay, before we continue, I just want to take a second. Okay, go ahead.
I just wanted to thank John for asking that because I was going to bring that up to ask the superintendent to explain why there were so many. And also explain that every time you see Ida, know that it is a FEMA request. That's what you're dealing with. So, but thank you, John, for bringing that up or asking that.
And I was going to reiterate that fact of Hurricane Ida repairs were our FEMA requests. Also, we're looking at an agenda which, over the letter, we double in the alphabet. But that's just a true testament to all the work that's being done in this time for us to recover from the hurricane. And in the end, what we really want is the best for our kids and our employees. So I really think it shows that we really on the right track. So thank you to all of our people, our maintenance, our land facilities, all south, everybody that's working and managing. Okay, all right, thank y'all very much. All right. We have it. We have it. Okay, was there any additional public comment? We had some board discussion. Is there any further board discussion? Anyone? All right, if not, we'll go ahead and we'll go ahead. Okay, motion passes. All right, that leads us to new business. Letter A, to consider authorizing the superintendent to request permission from the district attorney to employ special counsel, namely Ms. Kendra S. Kimble of Immigration Support Services, and adopting a resolution requesting from the Attorney General the hiring of Ms. Kimble pending the approval of the district attorney. Mr. Robby Lee?
Superintendent Martin, President Babbitt. Annually, we come before you for this particular item. This is in regards to immigration items that we could have that would come before us, and we utilize this agency to accomplish a lot of matters in case there is any.
Can I get a motion? Motion by Dr. Guyot, seconded by Ms. Sharpentier. Any public comment? Any board discussion? If not, we'll go ahead and vote. And that motion passes. Item B, to accept a change order request for Hurricane Ida repairs in the sum of one hundred and thirty thousand two hundred twenty-two dollars and eighty-eight cents to add a canopy, walkways, ramp, power, and foundation work for the temporary band room at Golden Hill Upper Elementary School. I have a motion from Ms. Fertitta, seconded by Ms. Sharpentier. Any public comment? Any board discussion?
I just have a question. Is this the, we are pulling something from the middle of the...
This is a different...
It's the same thing. It's a modular building we're doing for the band room, right? And it's Ida, to have room there bigger than the building. The original one y'all voted for, that was on committee, was for the building itself and to set it up, secure it, everything else, utilities. This is to get with the building, right? And we, sorry for not bringing it to the committee, but we want to stay on schedule. So that's why we brought it in.
So in order not to set the job back, it came straight to the... Okay, Ms. Fertitta?
I just have a question about the modular buildings that we're doing. Our insurance covers it or the company's insurance covers it? Or it could be it. We have some...
So, Madam President, I would like to request that we open up this document and show the public that's present so they can see what we actually see. This is an original contract that comes to us. And so it does have line items for expenses. And again, that's just obviously for information to see what we're actually looking at. And second page has kind of the meat and potatoes of what's happening, what's going on.
And this is a good reference to the question that you had earlier. So...
And so, and so just to be clear, this is going to continue to appear on this meeting through board docs, and it's accessible to the public. Ongoing, it does a change order to this item. In the future, you can always refer back to the original.
Thank you. It's a good idea.
It's original cost that we have incurred regardless.
Okay. I'm thinking I have another public comment. So if you'd like to approach and state your name and address, please.
This is Gail Navarre, 408 Community Drive, Tivito. And I guess part of the thing, like when I talked today, she had to send me a little cheat sheet, like they called it, of how to get into board docs. It's still just a problem. I mean, you know, I've been coming here for two years, I've been going for now, and I'm still just learning how to get in. And so it's just difficult if you're a parent who wants to know something that's going on. They're not going to have any idea how to get in there. So I thank you for showing that. But it's like, I just wish there was a way to make it more transparent for all people. You know, you shouldn't have to be at the meeting to get that. So that's just my comment.
Thank you very much. And if anyone is interested in accessing board docs, it is on the LeFouche Patch website. You don't have to log in. You just have to know to go and to find the link, and you can get to it from there. Right? And the meetings are all archived on board docs. Yes, Dr. Guyot?
So, Madam President, just to kind of piggyback that, I would like to say accessible is probably a better term than transparent. And I'm not trying to put that word in your mouth. I'm stating it on myself. I think that, again, it's accessible. It may not be ideally accessible, and it may not be user friendly, right? But correctly along, you get this as a membership to, at LSBA.
It's an additional subscription that we've adopted. There are a few folks that provides this service. Board docs doesn't have the monopoly on. But it's a complicated thing that they're doing. Because what they're doing is putting together a meeting, logging to your meeting, and then providing the documents down into the board through executive content that our staff and the public can public comment. So it's a complex platform. It's not like a simple Google Doc. But if anybody needs to know how to access it, our office is available. They just call.
Yes, Becky, one other thing, too, is that we have Facebook. You know, you can go on Facebook and you can go back and see the meetings. Have the Facebook.
I think in a perfect world, you'd be able to search by keyword. And that's what would probably make it more user friendly. But I just don't think that the program allows for that. So you just have to know the date in which the information was presented. And like someone said earlier, by calling our office, someone can maybe point you in the right direction as far as the date to be able to get to the data that you're seeking, if that's, if that makes sense.
And the contracts, like we said earlier, if you were looking, you're probably going to go straight to Land and Facilities Committee meetings. And that would be the place that you would start. Dr. Guyot? And, and that would be the place that you would store. Dr. Guyot?
Yeah, so I would like to make a request. Can we talk with the program creators in board docs? Can we just ask them? Maybe there's a tutorial that we could post on our website about navigating it. Uh, again, can we just inquire about that?
Yes, sir.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Alright, um, any further discussion? We have a motion, we have a second, we've had public comment, we've had board discussion. So if that's okay, we'll go ahead. If everybody's good, we'll go ahead and we'll vote. Motion passes. Memorial Resolutions. A, Ms. Gail Sereney, retired custodian. Ms. Sharptier?
Yes, Madam President. Ms. Gail Sereney was hired by the LaFouche Parish School District on March nineteenth, two thousand and seven as a custodian at Galliano Elementary School. She was promoted to head custodian on August twenty-ninth, two thousand and nineteen, and Ms. Sereney retired on July first, two thousand and twenty-three, having served the LaFouche Parish School District for a total of sixteen years.
I move that these resolutions be adopted by general consent and that a copy of the resolutions be recorded on a special page of our minutebook.
With no objections, let the record reflect that these resolutions were adopted by general consent and will be recorded on a page, special page of our minutebook. Item A, tentative dates of future meetings. A, Special Board Meeting, Wednesday, September thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. B, Policy and Academics Committee, Wednesday, September twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three. C, Business Committee, Wednesday, September twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three. D, Land and Facilities Management Committee, Wednesday, September twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three. And E, Regular Board Meeting, Wednesday, October fourth, two thousand and twenty-three. If there's no further business to go before.
I'm sorry, one announcement.
Oh, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Almost forgot, Madam President. I do apologize. One of our very own board members has been appointed to a state board. Uh, Ms. Marion Fertitta has been asked to serve in the Louisiana State Library Board. So just want to congratulate her.
If that's it, we'll go ahead and meeting adjourned.